It's gonna be all about the gavel for the next two meetings. Welcome to the Board of Education meeting on Monday, June 3rd. Can I get a motion to open the meeting?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you. Can I get a motion to move to executive session to discuss the superintendent search?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Alright, thank you. So let's stand for the pledge. Aye.
I declare the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, America, God, and individual liberty and justice for all.
Alright. We would like to move into public input one. Is there anybody for public input one? Public input one? Public input one. Alright. Can we move into the consent agenda? Can I get a motion to approve consent agenda items five, one through?
Five eighteen.
Five eighteen.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? I'm just kidding, we're doing it online.
Oh, right.
Alright.
But we also have some resignations, retirements in there, so are you gonna say something right now?
Um, we're gonna, a lot of our teachers and our cabinet members are at Baccalaureate tonight, so we will recognize our retirees at the next meeting.
Okay.
They all are with regret.
Yeah.
Chris, do you want me to put you in?
I'm sorry?
I'm just waiting for your vote.
Okay.
Thank you. Let's do analysis.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve action item six, one?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion?
Uh, yes, I had some questions. So this is the agreement between our school district and the archdiocese to secure twelve parking spots in the church's parking lot. In the back, is it the back of the church where they're located?
Yeah, in the church parking lot, yeah.
Okay, great. So it's had a couple of questions about this. One, uh, the, it was, okay, so the date has been changed since when we received it. I was asking why it was dated, it says dated May of two thousand nineteen, but why would it be dated last month?
Well, we actually only concluded, um, the agreement is actually with the Saint Andrews Church here in Sag Harbor, but their legal team is with the archdiocese. So, um, this was, there, there, we think that New York State Department of Education is, has a certain level of bureaucracy. The archdiocese has an even a higher level of bureaucracy. So we finalized it just prior to the last board meeting, so it would've come on late, so...
Oh, I was unclear about my question, I'm sorry. I'm wondering why this would be so soon? If school's not gonna open till the, till September, why would we start paying for the twelve parking spots in May?
Because, because we have construction workers and staff members that are consistently out sight down there. And this provides parking for the contractors as well.
But they can't park their vehicles there because it can't be commercial vehicles.
So, um, when they talk about commercial vehicles, they're talking about big commercial vehicles, not vehicles that are just standard size. So that's what they were talking about. They don't want us pulling on anything that would be oversized vehicles. So a van that is, you know, like a plumbing van is fine, somebody's pickup truck is fine, but they don't want commercial sized vehicles.
But then shouldn't the language be different? Because it says for non-commercial vehicles, and we have parents who have a truck that's a plumber, or that's legally a commercial vehicle, we'd be, hold on, we'd be in violation of the contract if we allow people to park there.
Right.
So, an oversized vehicle is something different, but we have lots of commerc- this explicitly says no commercial vehicle.
Right, and they wouldn't change, the diocese wouldn't change that language, so, um, but I, all of our, we can simply, if, if, if it pushes to that point, all of our, like, for instance, our own staff members can park there, which can clear up space on, in the yards, um, you know, their, our custodial staff is down the regular, they can park there. But, you know, our pickup truck can be down there, you know, and many of these don't have, they aren't commercial vehicles that they're driving down there. So, you know, when we discussed this with them, the diocese wouldn't take that language out because they were too concerned about over- they're very concerned about oversized vehicles. They wanted to keep that explicit language in there because they really felt that the what ifs, you know, what if somebody tried to sneak in? You know, I think they might've had problems when Bullwinkle was there with, with commercial vehicles, because they did this with Bullwinkle, and they had problems. So they wanted to make sure they didn't have those same problems moving forward.
So if you're a parent and you have a pickup truck that has a part, you know, a paint company on the side, you're not, you can still park there if you're seeing your child?
This is really for, um, for our, our staff parking, so that we can clear up space around Stellamaris for parents. So this is, these are, there are twelve spaces, so we're gonna have about twelve employees.
Okay.
Twelve to fifteen employees.
Twelve to fifteen will be there on every, okay. But I understand, so what Chris's question, and I had the same question, is, but our staff isn't starting there until the fall. I mean, we have occasional people, so I don't understand why we're paying twelve... And I, and I, this has happened before where we have an agreement or a document that says one thing, and we're told that it means something else, and I don't feel comfortable approving that. In other words, they really, the document should then say no oversized commercial vehicles. Because if we want it for the plumber, then Chris is right, then it's, it contradicts what's in this document. I also am concerned frankly with the price. You know, my understanding is this was supposed to be sorted out a long time ago, it wasn't, uh, you know, and we were also assured that it was gonna be either free or nominal fee. This seems to be a little more than a nominal fee, especially if we end up using more spaces than what's contracted here, right? It grows, so I, I just, I had, I'd asked this to be moved into action items because I had the same questions that Chris just asked, and then, you know, these other concerns with it. So I don't feel like I can support this the way it is now.
So, um, we, um, the Catholic school, church here would, would like to make it nominal, but when the diocese got involved, they were like, we know the price of land out in Sag Harbor, and we feel like, this they feel is nominal, because the price of parking and the price of property out here is expensive. And they are taking on, this is, you know, this for them could become potential to have problems. So they're providing parking, we need parking, and like, for parking for hospitals and that kind of thing, it's, it's at a premium.
Yeah, I understand, but I, we had an opportunity to settle this prior to signing the document on buying Stellamaris. And in my view, if we had done that, uh, this wouldn't be looking the way it is. So I just wish we had done that when there was more leverage. I, I can't support this the way this is, because I don't feel, I don't feel comfortable with the document that says no commercial vehicles, and then we're told, oh yes, but those commercial vehicles can park. That's not what the document says.
Alex?
Just a question, so what, what happens if we don't approve this?
Then we won't have parking for, we have a lot of people down there right now, and we are congesting the streets of Sag Harbor right now, which is kind of what we told the community we work hard not to do, which is why we wanted to get this done as quickly and efficiently as possible. I can, if you were to sit down with the finance committee, the reason we pulled this out was that the diocese was at the table, and they were pitching for a much higher price on parking, and this is a much lower price than we would've had on parking. Because the diocese really was going for a much higher price. Kathy Montalvo, can, can you verify that as the school secretary?
No, I understand that, I just, a couple of things. I mean, I think the point about commercial is a valid one. I understand what you're saying, I'm sure they told you that, but it does, it's not how it reads. And I don't, what are they using that lot for? So they're just giving it to us Monday to Friday, right, seven to six? What's, what do they use that for? Is there any...
Um, they, they have...
Like, why can't we have twenty spots?
So, they have, they have, they have a number of things, like, they have funerals, celebrations of life, they have religious ed classes. You know, the church is a, is a vibrant place here in Sag Harbor.
There is a week too?
Yeah, so I was down touring the facilities when I took our facilities person over to show them where the parking spots were, and they had a funeral going on, and the parking lot had cars in it. It wasn't full, but there was, there was cars in it, and everybody was, you know, rubbernecking to see what was going on at Stellamaris. But, you know, we have like five companies down there right now, and we are definitely congesting the streets so that it does create, it does create problems, because the Stellamaris, Saint Andrews is only using that parking for Saint Andrews right now.
So, question, the twelve spots that will be ours, is that to say that they'll be designated our spots during the week and nobody else can park there unless they're our vehicles?
They want us to actually put our Stellamaris, they want us to put, you know, our initials right on those spots, yeah.
So they'll be completely set aside for us? And so if, because our options over there are to park on the street, which is what everybody's doing now, right? So, um, even if hypothetically, even somebody who has a pickup that it's got commercial plates on it, if they start to give a hubbub about that, then we have plenty of employees that don't have commercial vehicles that could park there, that free up street side parking. So either way, we're alleviating some congestion on the street side parking.
So, I know that Paul's down there every day, although right now his car's in the shop yet again. But, um, you know, I drive a car, he drives a car, Matt drives a car, our, you know, the construction workers, you know, our contract manager, he drives a pickup truck, but it's not a commercial vehicle. So, it's twelve spots. It's not, it's not a lot, but it's five hundred dollars worth of space in Sag Harbor per month. You know, that's a lot of real estate in Sag Harbor.
If, if somebody who is not associated with the school uses one of our spots, I know many people that work in the village park in that lot during the week. So, and they do it, they do it every day, I know they do, I work with them. So if someone is, if, if people are using the school's spots, although they're not affiliated with the school or school population, then do we get to use other spots in that lot, or how is that rectified?
I assume we do what we do here, where, where people get a parking pass that hangs in your, you know, we have Sag Harbor that Mr. Ali gives out to show that you are Sag Harbor employed.
So if you're, if you're a parent and you're coming to a morning thing there...
It's not parent parking.
Okay, so parents won't be allowed to use these spots?
It's Sag Harbor employees to clear space for parents to be, so they can park right around.
Right, I just wanted, so that, that I think will be really important to communicate, that parents are not allowed to use these spots, so they understand. Because I think they may assume that that might be, you know, good parking for them, so. Another question I had was who's responsible, and I, and I read the contract, and I apologize if the legal language covered this and I didn't pick up on it, who's responsible for like clearing the snow on those spots and that kind of thing?
It isn't in there, and I did contact Kathy Montalvo, and she said they have very early morning snow removal because they have, they have a gala mass. So they, they snow remove every morning, and I'll put her on our, our chain, so she knows the school's closed too.
And they're not gonna have, if they have a mass or a wedding or funeral during the week, they're committing that, that their patrons will not use our spots?
Yeah.
Alrighty, and then just one last question in this contract. It says here licensees also agrees to pay when due all taxes, including without limitation real estate taxes. What is that?
I don't know, I'd have to ask our attorney.
I'm just wondering what the financial liability of that is? Like, what could that, what kind of amount could that be or not be?
The only cost we're, we're, that Sag Harbor has is, is what's in the contract, which is the five hundred dollars per month.
Oh, okay, because this says that we, we agree to pay when due all taxes, including real estate taxes.
Alex?
Just gonna ask again, I'm, what would be the big downside? If we just tried to negotiate some of these terms, maybe look at it again a couple, because I think Chris made some good points, and I think... No, there are a few, I also, this liability and indemnification provision, the way I'm reading that, like, that something, they could run someone over and it looks like it's our fault, or that we're indemnifying them regardless of, what's that language? Irrespective of the circumstances under which it occurred. So it just, it is, it sounds like you've done a good job negotiating this, but it, but maybe we ought to try to put this off and get the commercial thing clarified. Also seems to me if, if we're gonna get these spots exclusively, that that should say that in here, so that they're...
I can, I can try.
But is that gonna blow up the whole deal?
I can, I can try, I think it's been very, very, I, I give a lot of credit to Kathy Montalvo because she's become the diocese whisperer. We are not high on their priority list, but, um, so this has been...
How long have they been?
This has been since the close of, when we closed with, with, with the church.
Three years.
Yeah, yes, this has been a long time. And, and not for, you can talk to Michael, I mean, he's been, he's been the one working on this. We had an entire agreement that we've sent back and forth, and they put the entire agreement aside about six months ago and then developed their own agreement, so.
So, I guess from my perspective, this is, I mean, as someone who drafts contracts for a living, it's a terribly drafted contract, so, but, but with that said, that doesn't mean that it's not the best we can get. So, our school attorney looked at it, correct?
Our school attorney developed it with...
You looked at it, are you telling us this was the best we could get?
Our, our attorney, um, said this is, this is the, is, is the work he's done. Because literally they took our contract and put it aside, and they sent it to us, and this is about the fourth revision we've had.
The thing, the only thing that makes me really fine with it is it's terminable by either party on thirty days notice. So if it doesn't work for us, we can get out, and they can get out. So it's kind of like, if this was, if, if you're bringing this to us saying like this is what you get, or school attorney said this is what you get, and we need this for parking, like, fine, I'm good with it.
And the compassionate side of me is that we are heading into the summer months, and we have, we have, they're doing a wonderful job down there, but we have all hands on deck right now. We have a lot of people that need parking and aren't, and we're making some noise down there. I just don't want to inconvenience our neighbors or our community, I want to be a good neighbor. So, um, when we start, you know, and I, and everybody, we have a wonderful construction managers down there, everything clears about, about how difficult this is for everybody. You know, and that, be very aware that our neighbors only, some of them only come during the summer, be very cognizant, we've been very fortunate that the complaints have been minimal, and everybody's been very responsive. The cars on the street become something, you know.
So aren't those mostly commercial vehicles? Like with commercial license plates on them?
No, because some of the guys just drive there, they just drive and join their, so we have, we have a lot of crew workers. And there's, there's a lot of crew workers, so they drive their whatevers. You know, some of them drive off, like, and park on the edges of the beaches, but that, that's all going away now too. So some of them would park on Long Beach and get picked up, but Long Beach is about to get shut down, or I think it has been shut down.
It has now, yeah. The, but we held, we have, we have, but we have a commercial thing that needs to be clarified. We have a potential cost issue that we don't know what it is. I just don't understand how in good faith we can approve this without those things being clarified and rectified.
Any other questions?
I was just gonna say, can we get the answer to what the real estate tax liability could be? Because it says we're responsible for real estate taxes. So even if we give thirty days notice, if the tax bill comes in, it says here we agree to pay it, all taxes, including real estate taxes.
Aren't they taxed, is it?
I, I think they are.
But it's, it's taxes that are paid by the licenser, so by the diocese, by reason of this agreement, or licensees use of this space. So if like, if, like basically we're, like, it's actually kind of illegal, what they're saying is we'd have to pay their income taxes that they get from our income, which is actually not, we can't do.
I just want a clarification.
There's a lot of things in marriage that are just terrible.
I think, I, I believe that they don't pay taxes, but if they don't pay taxes, why are they saying we're responsible for their taxes?
Because someone just stuck this in there, it's the worst, it's terrible.
Yeah, I would just hate to live with something where we have something unexpected, an unexpected bill, because we were sloppy with the language in here.
And, I mean, it also says we can terminate immediately upon notice, as, as upon victory.
So is that, is that an option? Like, would you think we need this for the summer to communicate that this was, we're gonna do this for three months, but then, is that a possibility?
What, we want to renegotiate?
Yeah. But it seemed like Jordan's point was, perhaps this is gonna be some sort of temporary agreement, because there's some urgent need this summer?
Oh, to, to keep, keep refining this?
I mean, if, if that was the thinking, then we could communicate that we're, we're gonna need a different agreement come September. And it just, to me, it just seems like it's a three-year agreement, and there's a lot of problems with it. If we just tried to change some of these terms and have, be in a position to approve it in two weeks, would that, is that gonna...
They're very arbitrary. They could come back and say, well, then how about a thousand dollars? They're very arbitrary. I'm Catholic and I can't, I can't figure it out. They literally took our agreement and said, that's very interesting, after we'd worked on it for almost a year, and said, we're not gonna use that agreement anymore. There's a different attorney, this is the facilities use agreement we want you to use.
Can we maybe, like, put a pin in it and put it on hold for two weeks till our next meeting? And maybe just, we all have these questions that we've now flushed out and just...
Sure. See, I can make a list of questions we can give it.
Is the two weeks gonna make a difference?
We just won't have that parking available, and, you know, we are in the season now. You can make a list of questions, I can send them to Mike.
And he might respond saying, I tried all these things already and failed, this is what we're gonna get, in which case we can just look at the same agreement in two weeks, or else we...
The commercial thing needs to be clarified, because we can't be relying on something where we're told one thing and then the, and then the real estate taxes is another thing, is a real issue.
The commercial thing is not a problem, because commercial vehicles can stay out on the road, but we can have vehicles parked, which is gonna, that's gonna lighten the load right there.
So, um, we do have a motion on the floor to vote for this. My personal opinion is that I know that this has been three years in the making, and I know that our attorneys have been working on this for a long time. And I, I do feel like this is one of these, it's as good as it's gonna get kind of things, and I'm not as worried about the commercial thing, because I, it's twelve spaces, and we'll be able to fill them with non-commercial vehicles, that part doesn't concern me. I think we can get it, questions answered, but for me, it doesn't preclude me from approving it tonight. So that's, that's where I stand. But ultimately, we all get to vote. So is there any other discussion on the floor before we call this to a vote?
I, I would just say, like, I, I, I feel comfortable voting on it tonight. I ideally would love those questions answered, but we also all had time to ask them, and we didn't ask them today. I would say if we approve it tonight, maybe we have it, we go for it, but we ask them for an amendment to just kind of, like, we just say, this sentence makes no sense, can we amend it? This sentence is unclear, can we amend it? You know, maybe it's just, we get an amendment.
But then we can't vote on this contract, we have to vote on any document that we're...
No, I'm saying we, we have...
We, we amend it now.
Vote on this, no, no, we don't amend it, we vote on this, but we know it's imperfect. And so, you know, I propose that we then ask our attorneys to draft an amendment that addresses our concerns, and we at least put that in front of the diocese to see if we can get that in place at some point during the summer.
But once you, just, from my perspective, once you, once you approve the contract, there is no leverage in the negotiations to incent it to change it.
Except, there is, because we can terminate it on thirty days notice, and so can, I mean, that's the thing, is it's like, this contract has so little teeth to begin with, that I just don't think it's that big of a deal. That's why I just, I'm like, okay with it. If this was hard locking us in for three years and we couldn't get out of it, I'd, I'd have more concerns, but...
I think it's setting bad practice to have us approve a contract that has similar issues in it. Those issues should be resolved before this board approves it.
Okay, any other discussion on the floor? Alright, call the vote.
Is it coming up here?
Mm-mm.
It's not coming up.
We talked too long.
Sorry.
God's not happy.
Okay.
It should be up.
We voted.
Okay. I'm waiting for Alex and Chris.
I voted.
Not me, four?
I voted, you're welcome. The box is gone from my computer.
Alex, you voted too?
I'm trying to decide.
Alex, sorry.
Well, how, how many do you need to approve it?
Four.
I don't have questions in the floor, I just want to just tell me...
There's no box, I, I voted.
Do you want to go in and say change vote, and then see if it comes up again?
Okay.
Change vote, I think those are voting, can you do it again?
Good idea. Did the box disappear without me touching it?
Yeah, she just closed it.
Oh, now it's up on me again, oh, so we're all revoting?
Yeah.
Revoting, okay.
Everybody has it?
Yep, mm-hmm.
Should we just do it orally?
I guess, I stood on my press for some reason, but I'm sorry.
And it, the red box, the red box change vote is, is lit up and the box is gone, because I voted.
I don't know what's not taking you, alright, so all sorts you know.
All those in favor?
Okay, it's three. Opposed?
Opposed?
Two.
Motion fails. Alright, so, um, items for discussion, transportation options?
Sure. Scott, can you put that up for me? Thanks. So, um, we brought it down to the last, um, the last two options, which were options C and options D. And I was asked to bring it back to, to the cabinet and to the transportation. We didn't go back to committee again, but brought it back down to what were the concerns that were raised with the last, those, those last two options. So just to bring you back, so now we're, I'm renaming them. So recommendation one and recommendation two. And just to highlight, recommendation one is to add one run, and we did get the approval by the voters to purchase another, another bus. So, um, add one, one run to the middle high school, to Pearson, after school. So that would not change anything with the elementary, but that bus one, the estimation by our transport, our head of bus, would that, would, the subcontracting would shift dramatically, and it would keep the start time the same. The homebound runs are in-house, we would, she would, they would have shorter runs after school for the middle school and the high school runs. Considerations are additional traffic in the bus loop has logistical and safety challenges, which were brought to us. So additional challenges and concerns that were raised were additional bus will not fit into the current Pearson loop. The space for the additional bus will have to be protected earlier in the day. So, so prior to the bus run filling up, when the buses line up, what we'll have to do is station one of our guards there and place, you know, cones, to make sure nobody parks in that place. And where that is, and I have pictures in a minute, where that is, is actually where people come and go from the, what we call the business office parking lot, because it's adjacent to the middle school gym, and post a security guard on the end of that loop for safety, because what we're gonna have to do is basically kind of reorient students. So students are aware, that's where the bus is gonna be, that's where they need to go, that's where they, you know, where the safety aisles are for them, to, you know, where they need to walk, so that, that we don't have students going into that, that business parking lot. And, you know, we need adults guiding them, especially in the critical, like, month of September, until they get into that routine. And also guiding our adults who maybe in the past have always parked in that area. So the security guard would be a keen person, and the bus drivers that would be orienting the students to this, this additional bus. And it would be afternoon only. Cars in the bus parking lot will not be able to enter or leave. Again, that's, we're changing adult behavior as well as children's behavior. We also thought about, could there be another placement for that additional bus somewhere else? But our, kind of our gut is have the buses in one safe perimeter where we have all hands on deck, where everybody's watching. So, um, you know, speaking to our head of bus and to everybody that's regards, we're, those, those safety concerns aren't gonna magically go away, but with a lot of focus and a lot of thought and a lot of training, that, that, that was doable. But just so you see, have a look, you see there's a bus there, and it is, it is pulled out into, into the Division Street because it, because there was a car in its way. So, again, we'd have to put out cones, so cars would not park like that, so it wouldn't be pulled out like that. And then... And then, again, see there's a car parked right there, because they do kind of take that as, you know, it's on the edge of the street, it's on the edge of the, uh, business parking lot. But cars will just park there because it's convenient, right? So if there's a lot of retraining that would have to happen here. Um, so that, that we would add that, it's not naturally in the bus loop, but we would, we would have to sort of make that part of that bus loop. Um, the second recommendation, um, or option D is to change the middle high school start times to ten minutes earlier for Pearson. Um, the perks of this, it would roughly save that same amount, amount of, um, funding. It keeps the homebound runs ten minutes earlier release time from academic, and it may, it may ease the academic support concerns. Um, however, it takes away from the board's long-term goal of a later start time, which they've been working very hard towards. It sets that back. Um, and the changing times, you know, which is the health and safety, which was the original initiative behind all of this. And changing times going back and forth can really become a challenge for parents when they start to establish routines. So, um, that's, that's, I kind of tried to put it all down, um, and that way you can have some discussions around it.
That was helpful, thank you.
Alright, so, um, what I would like to propose tonight is that, you know, we saw the transportation recommendations of all the different options. Um, as a board, we had a conversation about it, we narrowed it down to these two. Some board members lean towards one, some board members lean towards another. Um, but tonight I'd like to give, um, our administration some direction as to which option we'd like to vet.
Because we really are coming into July now.
Right.
And there, these, both of these options require, you know, work and training and all that kind of thing.
Okay. So who's like to go first? Go for it, Alex.
Um, I, I feel very strongly that option one is a much better option. Um, there's not gonna ever be perfect solutions or answers for all these different issues that we're juggling. But, um, I don't wanna sound like a broken record, but we've received very strong direction from three major public health organizations that later start times, that start times before eight-thirty, put our, our children at increased risk of, um, depression, addiction, decreased academic performance. We're already forty minutes earlier than that time, and so I think that moving the start time backwards would be a big step backwards. And so, um, I think that recommendation one is a much better, um, a much better option.
Anybody else?
I'm gonna echo everything Alex said. He said it perfectly. I think recommendation one is a no-brainer, and I hope we can put this to rest tonight. I really appreciate all the work that's gone into this, the work by the committee, uh, the work to address the concerns related to it. I'm sure you will, and, um, I, I think we should all feel really good about option one, recommend, recommendation one.
Other discussion?
Um, I'm definitely leaning towards option one as well. Um, I guess the only questions I have are, so one, we're gonna have to add an afternoon bus, but we're buying the bus because the ballot was approved.
We, yeah, yeah, the ballot was approved.
So we basically, so we were gonna buy that bus regardless, so we have it, and so we're just not taking one out of commission.
Right. Definitely, yeah.
Uh, but then in terms of staffing for the sixth bus, that's, we already had that staffing available. So it really is, I just wanted to make sure, because when it says on the two different sides, the, the cost savings are, you know, two hundred to two thirty-five K on one, two hundred to two fifty K, those are real.
I didn't, I didn't do compile that work. The committee compiled that work. I just took it from what you're, the work you had done.
Yeah, so it was really tricky to nail those down.
I know, because. Moving targets.
Yeah, and especially because we, we don't know what our needs are yet, so it's tough to say how much it'll save us. But, um, the idea is that if we can contract our own, like, regular routes ourselves, then we still have to subcontract, we'll always have to subcontract, but we can subcontract less expensive routes, and so that's where the cost savings come in. But it's enough.
Yeah, so I think, based on all that, I'm definitely leaning towards option one. I mean, I think there's just been so many efforts to get the later start time in place. I don't wanna just unravel that, if there is another option, that potentially will have the same cost savings, but I think we should just, if we go with option one, we should just really keep an eye on the cost savings to make sure that they, you know, we have to see where things are in a year. And then we can, you know, look at it again if we need to.
Chris?
Um, uh, I, I'm not gonna keep it up, but he said, I agree with everything that's been shared. Um, I was on the board before we implemented this and was a, a opponent of, um, of moving the start time back. I have to say that the rollout of later start time, I think, was one of the things we didn't do as well. We do a lot of things really well in this district. I think we missed the mark a little bit on later start time, because it was rolled out without betting a lot of the repercussions of that move. And I'm really going to urge our administrative team to spend more time considering how to lessen that impact. You know, when I hear that we have teachers that are coaches and leave early, and those students are just left on their own to try to find somewhere else to go, that to me is not acceptable. You know, there, there should be somebody there watching the kids. There, you know, there are things, I think there are, there are holes in this that need to be plugged. But that does not take away from the fact that option one is a healthy thing for our children. But I don't want us to once again vote for supporting later start time and not having those problems addressed. So I, I would like for it to get back on an agenda of how we're gonna address some of those problems. Um, and how we're gonna address the children who don't have an IB teacher for academic support many times during the quarter. And we looked at it over a hundred and eighty-day period, but the reality is, most of the time they're missing is in one quarter for that one season, and the impact is much larger than what those stats actually look like on the chart. So, um, let's make sure we stay on top of that.
Um, I agree option, uh, one as well. I, I think the nice thing about option one is that we, we were gonna put it, um, out of circulation, and this gives us the year to try that and keep an eye on the, um, the academic support and try to address that in other ways and, um, and see how it works. And if it doesn't, we can always do something else later, so.
I do have a question about the bus. Originally, when we talked about buying a new bus, it was because we had a bus that was aging and we felt like we should take it out of regular circulation. Now we're gonna keep it in regular circulation, correct? So is there a high degree of confidence that it is in good enough shape to do that? Because one of the pitches of buying a new one was, this is kind of on its last lap, so we need to get a new one in. Are we gonna be in a position where we're gonna have to buy another new bus next year, because this is really on its last lap?
The, um, the transportation consultant was very clear that we, we need to be purchasing buses on, our busing is, they're, it's aging because of what they were all purchased.
Right.
So that's their recommendation anyway. And we have, we have substantial reserves now in the transportation budgets. I think it's my recommendation that the, that the board actually increase the amount in that, in that reserve. You know, I don't think we'll have, you know, you know, anyways, moving forward so that we can continue to funnel any of the, uh, funds we get in our shared services into that reserve. So make, make that reserve bigger, but this, we shouldn't be looking to our taxpayers for, for a decade to fund any of our buses. And, um, keeping your buses useful is a good, always a good idea.
Right, so, so keep, so keep upgrading the fleet.
Every year, every year, and that was his recommendation and it's a smart one.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
So we don't have to do it all at once, just like, one year per year, yeah.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, true. Yeah.
Um, any other discussion? Can I get a motion to approve recommendation number one?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Alright, all those in favor? Hi?
Hi.
Do you wanna do it on one?
Oh, can we? Do you, really? Let's try.
I did it, it worked.
Oh god, I almost hit the wrong button. Good thing you got that change vote in the court.
Okay, that's unanimous.
Thank you. Um, uh, item seven-two, I'm gonna table for next week when we have more board members for that discussion. Oh, and I also wanted to mention, uh, we had, uh, committee reports on this agenda, but, uh, that's only for business meetings, so we bumped that to the next week as well. Um, potential items not scheduled. Can I get a motion to approve, um, items nine-one?
Same. Second.
Discussion? Alright, open the vote.
Okay, that's unanimous, thank you.
Can I get a motion to approve nine-two?
So moved.
Second.
Open the vote. Oh, sorry, discussion?
Yeah.
Thank you, open the vote.
Unanimous?
Mm-hmm, okay, so at this time we will move into public input two. Anybody here for public input two? Come on up. Um, state your name for the cameras, and a comment should be as brief as possible and, um, address the board president.
Jeff Peters, three fifty-six Main Street, St. Andrews. Uh, just getting back to the parking at Stella Maris. Um, with the commercial problems that you're having now along the street, when Bolivar had their construction, their construction guys leased part of the parking lot from Stella Maris. So they could do that now, and that wouldn't cost us anything. If they need to worry about their trucks, they should speak to Stella Maris, and maybe they can rent it out for the summer. Because that's what Bolivar did.
Ste- um, Stella Maris?
The parking lot, St. Andrews.
Oh, St. Andrews?
Yes.
That's, that was what the contract was for, was for St. Andrews.
Yeah. Exactly, but what I'm saying is, instead of the school paying for it, because I, I know that when Bolivar was done, being worked on, they rented the whole parking lot from St. Andrews. The construction people paid for it, not, not Bolivar. So maybe you can look into something like that. That the construction guys can lease out that for the summer, so they can get their commercial stuff over there in the parking lot for the summer.
Well, I think, um, that may have been part of the reason this has been so prolonged. I, I don't think the, the church really liked that, um, that, that experi, that experience is what created the long term. Um, I think that's why the diocese jumped in and wanted to have, um, this prolonged contract negotiation, was partially because there, I don't know how the experience was, but that, that triggered them wanting to have more contract discussion.
Alright, and then going back to when we purchased Stella Maris, why didn't we talk about this before we purchased it, about the parking? It doesn't make sense to me.
So when we were in the, when we were closing on the Catholic Church, the diocese was at the table and was asking for a substantial amount of money for, for the parking. And, um, we're talking more champagne, and the little, uh, St. Andrews was like, that we shouldn't be trying to muscle the school for huge dollars on parking. So it should be something that's more affordable. So they, they wanted to charge us a very nominal amount, and the diocese was more interested in a higher amount.
Yeah, does the five hundred dollars include liability insurance in case someone gets, falls down on their property? If someone's car gets dented up, who, who is gonna be in charge?
So, uh, we have, we have a rider on that. That would be our school liability insurance. Um, nicer would care, we cover that.
And that's included in the five hundred dollars, so it won't increase our tax, our insurance won't go up?
No, we, we had to, we had to show them insurance, right, right.
And with, with that, I know this is a little technical, with having that parking back there now, are we gonna have to hire our own traffic guard to go across?
Initially, I thought we would. Um, if parents parked along any, if parents find parking along that area, the, the village will have to provide a, a parking, a crossing guard. So if parents are routinely parking in any of those side streets, um, like they do now, like we, how those, village provides a crossing guard for us now, um, they will, they will have to for, only for the pre-K, in the pre-K times.
And on a so-so positive note, I wanted to say thank you. Unfortunately, a parent had to come up and, uh, make a, a statement in reference to the basketball court outside. Thank you for, uh, getting it okay, but that's something that should be readdressed. It's still not adequate, and it should be addressed. And it was just too bad that, unfortunately, you know, we had to come up and mention that to the school. Um, we pay a lot of money to these guys to walk around and check out what's wrong and stuff. So hopefully, um, they continue checking everything out and making sure that gets better than what it is now.
And please, you know, if you don't have to make those statements at board meetings, you can just call either the principals or myself anytime.
Well, I, no, I wanted to make it because I needed to make it, and I think it had to be made, and it's, it should be done. You should, should be walked around once a week. I mean, this, there's a lot. I walk around and I check out, and there's a lot that could be done. So I just wanted to say that, and I'm that, and I thank you for getting it all corrected.
Thank you.
And, uh, congratulations on to the new board members and the board members that came back, and, and thank you for the ones that are not here, and good luck. We shouldn't have gray hair. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for public input two? Alright, can I get a motion to reconvene to executive session to discuss the appointment of a particular person?
Same.
Can I get a second?
Second.